Get there.
Yeah. Is that new?
You want to air it?
Yeah, that's new.
It's new.
Just gonna give one moment. And before we begin KP, can you just do a mic check?
Okay, I'm good. Thank you.
All right, awesome. Oh, love the background. All right, time being seven oh one, I call to order Franklin School Committee meeting. Meeting is recorded by Franklin TV and shown on Comcast, Channel nine, and Verizon, Channel twenty-nine, as well as recorded by Franklin Matters. Uh, we have a committee member, Sam Polly, who will be remote, and committee member, uh, O'Sullivan, uh, is, uh, not be able to make it to tonight's meeting, but she was here at the Budget Subcommittee meeting prior. I know, um, we'll talk about that in a little bit. All right, but now, we'll move on to our pledge speaker. Ryan Leesak, if you want to kind of come on up to the mic.
Ryan is an eighth grade student at Horace Mann Middle School. Ryan is an honor student and exemplifies what it means to live by the Horace Mann Middle School's six pillars of character: responsible, trustworthy, caring, fair, respectful, and a model citizen. Ryan is a leader in our school, whether it's a focused participant in the classroom, serving as a peer leader in seventh grade, or as a member of best buddies. Ryan was recently nominated by his peers and teachers to be part of this year's Six Pillar Society at Horace Mann Middle School. We are pleased to have him represent our entire school community tonight. Teachers shared, uh, the words they would use to describe Ryan: respectful, disciplined, dedicated, kind, a leader. One teacher also shared the following: Ryan is a pleasure to have in class, and with his strong work ethic, he will surely thrive in his future endeavors. Beyond academics, Ryan shines as a student athlete. He plays football, AAU ba- baseball, and Metro basketball. He also enjoys spending time with his family. It is with great enthusiasm that Ms. Mahdi, Mrs. Sandusus, and the Horace Mann teachers recognize Ryan tonight. We thank him for all the ways he has proved to be a positive impact on the Horace Mann Middle School community.
Congratulations on being the Six Pillar Situa.
Thank you.
Wonderful award ceremony. Go please, Ryan. Take your way.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Ryan.
Thank you.
If you want to take off, feel free to.
Give him a cookie.
Perfect. We got cookies right here for you. And now, um, as is customary, I will pause for a moment of silence. Uh, my heart goes out to Tyra Patel for him. Thanks. Um, review of agenda. Agenda allocated, everybody?
Mm-hmm.
All right, payment of bills taken care of, payroll vice chair McNeil.
Payroll's in order.
All right, jumping right to the superintendent's report.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Um, just a few announcements I wanted to make tonight. Uh, Franklin High School held its Class of 2025 graduation on Friday, June sixth, and celebrated the Class of 2025. It was a heartfelt, heartfelt event with memories and hopeful expectations for our students, and the ceremony began earlier than scheduled to avoid the inclement weather, and Franklin TV did an exceptional job of capturing the moment and the significance, which you can view if you visit FranklinMatters.org or Franklin TV, you can, you can see that. This, the speakers from the senior class just reflected on their collective thirteen-year journey through Franklin Public Schools from the first day to the lasting friendships and triumphs and challenges, and we congratulate the graduates, their families, the dedicated staff that have taught them along the way, and their shared journey is a testament to the strength of our community, and we look forward to supporting these young adults as they take the next steps beyond Franklin High School, so congratulations. Next, I have an update from the Community Preservation Act regarding playgrounds. You may recall, through our reorganization process, one of the areas that we were looking at, um, beyond the inside of the school building, was just how are we going to make sure that we have the playground space and usage to accommodate the students that we have within the Franklin Public Schools? So we're excited to announce that the Town Council unanimously voted to approve the Preservation Committee's proposed projects, which included playground expansion projects at both Lincoln Elementary Complex and the Pond Street location as well. A total of one hundred and eighty-one thousand, six hundred and twenty-three dollars has been allocated to support these enhancements. Um, a special thank you to Jamie Helen, Town Council, and the Preservation Committee for their support in this process of approving to get to the next round and the next round, um, and funding that plan. And we are currently working with the vendor to finalize the project and the timelines, and we'll share updates with you at future reorganization updates that we will have for the school committee and the community. Finally, we had the Franklin Middle School Family Engagement Night last night. It was a positive event. Uh, the families came, and we offered parents and caretakers informational conference-style opportunity to connect with school leaders. The attendees rotated through stations and covering key top topics such as the multi-tiered systems of supports, the steering committee's planning work, special education services, curriculum updates, department head updates, and, um, time with our counseling staff as well. So each station featured a short summary, a description, I'm sorry, discussion time to foster communication and highlight the efforts and supports for student success, and those who were unable to attend, the station summaries will be shared in the end-of-year newsletter that will go out to all families. So if you weren't able to attend, you can expect to see that information out there for you as well. Finally, the end-of-year schedule reminders. So this is a reminder to families that the last day of school is on Wednesday, June eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, and our ECDC last day is Thursday, June twelfth, with their Family Fun Day on Friday, June thirteenth. The elementary and middle schools will follow half-day schedules for the final four days of school, which are Friday, June thirteenth, Monday, June sixteenth, Tuesday, June seventeenth, and Wednesday, June eighteenth, is the final day, as I said. Uh, these early rela- early release days allow our educators, um, to pack classrooms at the pre-K through eight level and administer finals at the high school and prepare for end-of-year transitions across the entire district. So Franklin High School, as I mentioned, has the same final schedule as well. So that completes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Open up to, uh, committee.
Um, glad to hear that update on the playgrounds, and thank you for clarifying those last days of school. I still had the Thursday marked on my calendar and had a bit of a panic moment a couple days ago, wondering if it was five half-days, so no, Friday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday are the days, um, to mark. So two more whole days for us. Look at that. Um, thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, from my end, uh, I just wanted to make sure that the app and the school calendar sync up. I know there's a little bit of confusion on that front, too, where sometimes the app didn't have all those days as half-days.
Okay.
Um, so if we can just make sure that that all aligns, um, outside of that, nothing else. Appreciate the update.
I'll make a note of that right now. Thank you.
Uh, so regarding the playground expansion, I think that's definitely great that we have that, those funds for that. Um, do we think that that work, the expansion, will happen this summer, or is this something that will probably happen next summer?
Um, that's a good question. I know that they've already been in touch with, they had to scope out this project to get quotes, like real quotes from real vendors. I know that that occurred, and, um, I can follow up with you to get you more information. I believe the intention is, um, if that money is available, to act on that as soon as possible so that we can continue. I don't want to make a false promise without verifying publicly, but I certainly will confirm, and if I find out by the end of the meeting, I'll, I'll, I'll announce it to you.
Awesome. Great. Thank you. And then, as far as the design and expansion, um, once we have like a prototype of like what it would look like, is that something that will be shared out with the families?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you.
We can do that. Absolutely.
Uh, no questions, but, uh, like my colleague said, very excited to hear about the playground expansion. Yeah, I'd like to thank the Community Preservation Committee and the Town Council for, uh, those funds, and yeah, great to, great news for getting some. Thank you.
Thank you. And, uh, online?
Yeah, um, I have the similar question, where we'll ask the similar question. I'm all good. Thank you for the update.
And, um, yeah, the CPA, uh, money kind of going to the playgrounds is fantastic. Want to thank my, uh, my colleagues uh, on the Town Council for, uh, voting to kind of provide that, those funds, and I mean, the CPA itself was such a great big win. Was it like five or so years ago?
Uh-huh.
Uh, you know, it's, it's always amazing when the community is able to invest in itself. Uh, it just continues to kind of pay dividends years and years later down the road. So, thank you all very much.
One more quick thing. Sorry. When is the last day to sign up for the bus? Is that ten more days that we have?
That is correct.
That is correct.
Okay. June twentieth?
Yep.
But that's a Friday.
All right.
All right. Guest presentation's none. So, uh, going into executive session, pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the FEA unit, as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the school committee, and the chair so declares. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
Motion to enter executive session.
Second?
Second.
Discussion questions. Be a roll call. Gallagher?
Yes.
Griffith?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
McNeil?
Yes.
Sam Polly?
Yes.
Callahan, yes. All right, we will be back.
Before we say our peaceful business, anything you want to say to?
Um, yes, I would. So just to kind of orient where we are in our meeting, we're at the, um, Discussion Action Item section. We just came back from executive session, um, to discuss, uh, the FEA contract. So you'll see the first Discussion Action item is a recommendation that... We're good? Um, a recommendation to, um, ratify the Franklin Education, Education Association's Collective Bargaining Agreement. Um, the terms of this contract would go from September first, twenty twenty-five, for three years through, um, August thirty-first, twenty twenty-eight, as detailed. So I put that as a discussion item and recommendation for you.
All right. Thank you very much. Before, uh, we bring this to a vote, I'll just, uh, turn over to members who are on the negotiation team for anything they'd like to say, so.
None, or just, just for comments on it, then we'll open it for, if there's any questions or discussion on the actual vote. Yeah, no, that's fine.
Appreciate it. Um, so for those in the audience, um, Paul Griffith, I was one of the members of the negotiating team, uh, hence why I'm commenting. Um, I just wanted to take a minute to, to really thank, uh, all the members of the FEA negotiating team and the teachers as a whole. Uh, this was a, I think, a very collaborative, uh, and very, a very positive experience, I think, for everybody. Um, it was done, you know, really with, I think, everyone in the town's best interest, um, and really focusing on what we can do to make sure that we continue to provide, uh, the top-level education that we've come, you know, come to expect in this town. Um, so I just want to thank everyone that was involved. Uh, I think it really, what we were able to produce at the end is really a reflection of a lot of, uh, cooperation, um, and, and very purposeful negotiations between the two groups, so. Thank you.
Thank you. And, uh, Town Minister Jamie Helen.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I just wanted to piggyback on what Paul just said, and just a congratulations to the school committee, FEA. Uh, great job to Paul and Dave as the, uh, great leaders on that committee that they had. Uh, Lucas, Tina, Paula, Jana, Ken, the entire staff, Josh, great job with the negotiations. Um, it was really fun to hang out with the principals outside of discussing things like mice and mold, so it was really great to be able to talk to them. They did a great job throughout the whole process, and I really do thank, uh, Luke and the entire bargaining unit for FEA. Uh, this was a really great team effort, as Paul said, and I think this is my fourth negotiation thus far in Franklin, and, uh, this was by far the most efficient and productive, uh, negotiation that we've had so far. Um, every voice was heard, all the sides were heard, but also I was really impressed with the, uh, constraints and the time and the process that was put in place, that, you know, at some point, you know, you have to move on from some of the issues, and I thought everybody did a fantastic job. So huge congratulations to FEA, the school committee, the entire school community, on a great job. Well done. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely. Thank you. And, um, just like to say a couple words as well. Um, as the chair of the Negotiation Subcommittee, I'd like to thank, um, Lucas, Tina, Paula, Jana, Ken, and the entire team. Paul, thank you as well for taking time out of your busy schedule, too. Um, this was all the hard work, tireless hours that went into this. Um, just great job, very productive. Also like to thank the FEA and Lu Diaz, I see him. Thank you very much for just a very collaborative, just respectful, productive, um, negotiation process. Really, you know, couldn't have asked for better partners in this process. And just to, um, you know, reiterate to the community, um, now, we're really, you know, we stand behind this contract. We're really proud of the work that, that we all did. Um, and we really do think that this was the, the best possible outcome, um, for Franklin Public Schools community and, and for the town. So once again, thank you to everyone, and with that, I will entertain a motion to ratify the, um, Franklin Education Collective Bargaining Agreement as detailed.
I move to ratify the Franklin Education Collective Bargaining Agreement as detailed.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, uh, roll call vote. Gallagher?
Yes.
Griffith?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Sam Polly?
Yes.
Helen?
Yes.
And McNeil, yes.
Excellent.
All right. Can someone bring our esteemed chairman back in here? Hang on, we missed you.
Mr. McNeil, while, while Mr. Callahan's setting up, I just had a few remarks to make as well. It's basically piggybacking on what has been said already, but just wanted to express from, from my perspective and the leadership team that we put together on the call, I wanted to thank, uh, extend a thank you to all the, all of the folks that participated in this negotiation. Um, specifically Luke, um, Chair of the FEA Negotiations Team. Your leadership, your advocacy, and your organization and communication, on behalf of the members and the entire FEA team, I mean, their participation was really outstanding, and I think it made for a very productive, as, as has been said. So thank you very much for your leadership. Um, Mr. McNeil, and Mr. Griffith, and Jamie, um, for being a part of this process throughout and really dedicating and, and listening and participating in the ways that you did, I thought was, um, really a good representation of the full committee and the work that, um, that you all bring to the table. I thought you did a great job representing your, uh, your committee. And Attorney Coleman has been mentioned. I think Jamie mentioned, he did a good job of representing the school committee's best interests through the process, but also, um, I thought, uh, brought a balanced approach through the process. And we had district leadership. We had principals from each level representing, um, the team, and just wanted to say, I reiterate all that's been said, and thank you very much, and congratulations on the, on the three-year contract, um, with, um, some, some additional revisions to longevity, paid parental leave for some of the tenants, but ultimately, it's a, it's a well-earned contract for our, for our educators. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Now, for B, FY twenty-six, final budget approval. Okay.
In your packets, you have, um, some materials. Uh, we also provided a slide presentation that I'll present now. I think I'll just make my way over to the... Actually, can you, can you take your, all right, we'll stay here.
Okay.
Okay. So, just to set the stage for, um, this part of the, uh, conversation, there is some action items that need to take place, but in preparation for the meeting, um, we provided information, details, that we'll share with you and the community, uh, in your packets. But basically, uh, we developed a proposal, um, where we prioritized reducing our, some of our non-salaried expenses to the greatest extent possible, recognizing the vital role that our educators and leaders play in the success of our students. Um, but while no reductions come without consequence, our primary aim was to preserve our core instructional experiences, maintain essential services that support student learning well-being. Uh, so the revised total budget, um, is seventy-eight million, three hundred and nine thousand, four hundred and ninety-five. So this represents, um, an eight hundred and thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and five dollar increase. So we'll walk through this now that the presentation is queued up. Some of this information's on my slides, and we'll walk through it. So, I wanted to start, I know this has been a, a very long process, and there has been, you know, despite the outcome of the special election, I find that, you know, when things get challenging, we talk to our students oftentimes about when things get hard, you know, when you think about what you don't have, it's also an opportunity to think about what you have and try to think about practicing, um, and modeling that and practicing some gratitude. So I'm reminded to do the same in this moment as well. There's two things that stick out to me. One, um, the community, the students, staff, and families who supported this budget, um, when we put it forth and when you approved it, um, despite the outcome, the, the process that went through, there were people out there that I don't think, we, we hear about the loss, but there were people out there every day supporting this out, and, um, I wanted to just say that I appreciate what they've done, and, and we're out there trying to make, uh, make this work to advocate for our budgets. That's one piece. The second piece is just recognizing and trying to, uh, send some gratitude, just gratitude for the professionals that we have at Franklin Public Schools and the staff who continue to serve our students. It's, um, it's a difficult situation. I think we're in, um, a precarious place as a district as we move forward, but I'm, I really mean this when I say it, uh, we can forge ahead together. Um, I was with my brother-in-law last weekend, and he, he had a quote, and it's been sticking in my head, uh, since I was helping him with, I'm not a mechanic. He is clearly, I'm not. I'm more of a helper, uh, type person in that situation, but he said to me in the middle of, uh, a issue, a mechanical issue, was this basically like, sometimes the only way forward is just through it, and we are moving through, and I feel as though decisiveness has a role in really trying to set us up for success as we move forward. I made some comments at Town Council around this concept, but I would just want to reiterate those tonight. So as we move forward, I'm gra- I'm just grateful for, um, our staff that work with kids every day and the community of supporters that we do have within town to be here. So just to overview, this slide just captures what I was about to read to you, but it's better to see on screen. At the end of the day, basically, as you know, um, the final allocation from Town Council puts us at a two-million-dollar deficit. So I've laid out the allocations from twenty-five to twenty-six as proposed, and where we landed, and ultimately, tonight, uh, we're seeking a vote based on some recommendations that would allow us to adopt a final budget, to take action, to finish the school year, and continue to plan for next school year. So, um, you can see some of the statistics there. That's okay. Brief timeline, um, this is the process that's taken place. If you look, we've streamlined it. I took out a lot of the information, but tried to hit on some of the key points of the, of the year, and here we are for an adjusted budget vote, and then ultimately, the fiscal year starts July first, which is in less than a month. So, principles and priorities. You know, we recognize there are multiple, uh, there are, there's a need for reductions to make that number. It's, uh, difficult decisions to reduce positions, try to preserve the integrity of our instructional core, but also focus on looking at those essential student services. We also look to leverage attrition, um, positions that, um, became either available or were unfilled, and then ultimately, looking at how we might look at our reorganization to mitigate any deeper impact, and, uh, basically looking at equity, safety, and the continuity of levels, uh, of services across levels, so. Um, I put this in here. This has come up, um, a few times, but thought it was worth noting. So as we go through and talk through, um, the scope of reductions, I put this in one of our slide decks last term, but I feel like I need to put this out there to show, this is... this is from the DESI radar, I pulled it this morning, um, as data. I know, um, there's been, unfortunately, as we go through this process, and we've seen it on a, on a macro level and we've seen it at, at the town level, when the budget becomes tough and we have to figure out how to cut and where to cut, it, it, uh, it can shift. But I wanted to just put out some of the ratios that we see, um, per hundred students, um, Franklin versus the state. Um, these are particularly to some of our district admin, instructional leadership, school leadership, clerical, um, and I put that out there as, uh, information that was shared, uh, as a question that came up. So, I've added to this presentation, it started off as four slides, it's sixteen to kind of capture things I've read or people have asked me about. So, keep going. So, there's non-salaried reductions and there's salaried. We've, uh, dedicated two-thirds of the reductions coming out of non-salaried line items and we'll walk through those in more detail for the community and those in the audience today. But basically you can see here just the big ideas and the topics of where the, the funding and the reductions will come from. And, um, this will be posted online as well, um, for folks who want to reference it later. There's just a pie chart representing, um, the percentage of reductions and where we were able to make some of those changes. So, as we look through here, you'll see athletic fees, um, supplementing and reducing, that would keep the athletic fees as the same as they are today. That's the rate that, uh, that's based on rates that are existing today and would remain in effect. Um, we talked a little bit about attrition at the Town Council meeting, but basically that accounts for your realized savings from replacing, um, folks who retire with, with, um, you know, newcomer, newcomers or newly hired folks within, um, within the, the ranks and that come in at a lower salary. You'll see here, um, the EA shelter money, that was money that we received from the state that was, um, was to be used for the direct benefit of our students, um, in our EL program or in the shelter and we were able to transfer the salary, um, twenty percent of the salary into supplementing the salaries of our EL department. So, uh, no cut to, uh, a person in the department, but applying some of those funds for that reason. As you look at the daily substitute pool, this is your pool of subs that are on-call on any given day that if there is someone who calls out, um, and a high number of absences on any given day would result in classroom coverage challenges, um, and the, for the safety of students, we are required to have them supervised during the day. That's a twenty-two percent reduction. Moving on, lane change, the, uh, this is adjusted based on the deadline for lanes change requests and once the deadline passed, we knew that this was money we could apply to this budget to offset some of the, some of the deficit that we needed to cover. Um, you'll see here, district supplies, we went down every single district account, every school account, went down and did a fifteen percent reduction and that's what led to, uh, that number that you see in front of you. Finally, health insurance, by adjusting some of the positions and reductions, that's the, um, healthcare savings, uh, that we anticipate seeing. Next, you'll see with textbooks and software, that's in the officer teaching and learning, that's a hundred and ten thousand cut in the reduction from the operating budget. Part of that will be offset by using some of the, um, lost book revolving accounts that would go to supplement and prioritize some of the, um, textbooks that are needed for a specific course, um, that will, that will need to be determined still. Instructional interventionists, this is a pool of money that we have to do tier-two small group intervention. So, um, basically that pool of money goes to put towards hours for interventionists to come into school and work with students who've identified as needing additional support. We did not decimate the entire pool of money, but we did, uh, reduce it in an effort to, um, bring this budget bout, to a balance. Next is non-instructional stipends. These are your clubs and activities and I want to be really clear with the community, we have not determined which clubs and activities will run or not run, but they will be reductions to those areas. And that will come, we will make those decisions in the fall, but I, I know that those reductions we need to look at. I know there are some clubs and activities that the middle school may need to run as a, as a, as a function of establishing new school communities, like a student council type thing, but ultimately the larger picture, we are not going to have that information. So, if I receive an inquiry, I'm not going to be able to share. I think we have to have more in-depth conversations as we enter the school year with the, um, folks that are in the schools at the secondary level particularly, um, to have that. The high schools program has been running and that will also need additional talk, but we won't be able to discuss or make any, um, we need to plan that out and have thoughtful decision-making happen in the fall. Moving on, committees and summer work, although a small number was just, uh, representative of, that's what summer work, uh, money we had available has also gone away. So, those are non-instructional salary. So, for salaried positions, this is the list of positions that we've identified that we would reduce from this budget in order to balance the budget. And I'll just walk through these with you so that you have a sense. Just want to say right up front, these positions existed in our budget because we determined at the time we built it and asked for it that we needed them. We needed them. So, um, we've worked really hard to look at the human beings we have in the district and find ways to keep people with us, um, but it comes at the, these are reductions of positions. What I will say is as we go through these, I'll explain, uh, to the best of my ability kind of how this shook out. But basically that K-five administrator of student services, we did not fill because it was so close to, when you approved the budget, it was so close to the override, we did not want to have another human onboard that could potentially lose a job. So, we left that position as unfilled, but that is a position, we had two of those in the budget. One for each school, each elementary school now will have, um, specialized programs existing at a higher, um, number at each building. And you have, just demographics are increased as the number of kids in under-one roof increase. So, this posi, this particular position, the student services admin was built to really directly support those functions. This will fall to one person now that will be spread out across both complexes, um, but the work will be basically, um, doubled. Uh, the next position, there was two, um, STE positions. These are your science, technology, engineering positions at the elementary level, one for each complex. We have a new MCAS science that's being revised in fifth grade. One of the thoughts was around your third, fourth and fifth grades as we look at our science curriculum that we've implemented through, um, middle school and into high school, was trying to give, um, teachers and elementary teachers are expected to teach all subjects, have a content expert in science to help them with that. What will happen now is this position will be cut from the budget. One will exist and be spread out, just primarily focusing on fifth grade only as a, um, fallback to the original plan. As you move forward, you'll see here, um, in, in EL department, that is a reduction of a position at our high school and our EL department. You'll notice the next three are grade-level positions. So, with, um, regard to these, as we built our budget and we sectioned out our school, we made reductions in these three grade-level areas. Um, the positions will go away. You'll see in here, you can see the class averages and I have a slide on this I can show later, um, that talks about this, what the adjustment would be to those particular classes. Um, and you'll see a slight increase in those particular sections. These positions will go away. Um, two of, actually, all of these positions, because of vacancies that exist within, um, the district, uh, the human beings that work for us will have, um, jobs in licensed, in an, in a, in a role that they are licensed for, but this is a change and a shift from our, from our original plan as we built our budget. That said, the human beings, um, will land based on, um, how vacancies have opened up through resignations, through opportunities and, uh, and shifts and requests to shift into different roles. Next, you'll see a tech support, so technology department, one of their tech support, um, positions is eliminated in this budget as well. Next, ESPs, we've, um, eliminated three ESP positions that, um, exist that will, um, these will not be filled. Um, they were, happened to be, um, a, uh, reduction from one position that we had in the budget based on the classrooms and how they were built. And the other two, one is a, uh, both retire.
One's a retirement and one's a resignation.
Yeah, retirements. So, humans, no, but that's three less ESPs we have in the district to support at the, um, at our, with our youngest students. As we move forward, the final is your building-based substitute. So, we have daily subs that arrive every day to school. Um, right now, we have eleven currently, we will reduce to nine and I've laid out on this, how they will be distributed. You'll have one at each elementary, one for both sites of the ECDC, and then the middle and the high school will each have two, um, daily subs that will be in the buildings. And that, um, accounts for the FTEs that will be reduced in the, in the budget. Oh, I'm sorry. So, there's one more, I missed it in there, the facilities. So, albeit a small number, there is a facilities, uh, admin, administrative assistant position for building use and, and rentals and, and that nature, that will be absorbed into our Director of Operations, um, role and that's, uh, who will take that on moving forward, um, as just part of his responsibilities. So, just a summary, these are some of the impacts. You see a slight increase in those grade levels from three to five, fewer curriculum and co-curricular investments. We're looking at reduced DL at the high school and substitute coverage across all levels. And finally, an increased reliance on, on some of our revolving funds. Um, and we had a good conversation about that earlier in our budget subcommittee. Um, here's just a breakdown of the number of students in each of these grades. When you go from seven sections to six sections, I tried to lay that out so people could see what those class sizes are, just for that. What I will say at this moment is, um, the difficult decisions that this school committee made during your vote and the work that, uh, we've done to consolidate and reorganize, I think, saved ourselves from what could have been a worse fate. If we hadn't done that and hadn't reduced what we, um, the, the funds, uh, the budget that we had in the winter, rolling into, um, this school year, to have to have reduced the three million plus the two, five million in our current model, I don't know how we would have done that. So, as difficult as it has been and I recognize that, I will say, a piece of this is your ability to look at class sizes and not see that fluctuation, to have full teams at your middle school, um, have a benefit that I don't think, it's not, um, it's not as easy to see in this moment because there's so much change in what we're living through, but as we continue to go through our budget process and analyze this and work already starting, thinking about next year and how we'll model out, I think the decisions that were made, um, ultimately put us in the best position to sustain this type of movement, um, with some of the staffing changes. So, thank you. Um, the, just summary of next steps, um, basically you'll see here, it's just a, uh, reiteration of an overview and there's a recommendation in your packet for the final budget number, which is the seventy-eight point three million. And I just wanted to, to share this, uh, this last piece is just, you know, started with gratitude, kind of walked through the realities that we'll face. We put forth a budget in January that we felt set us up to be successful. Um, I, I believe that we will be successful, but these are actual reductions to our budget. So, although we were able to work and find people who were licensed in different areas and get as creative as possible, that's our job, that's what we should do. I don't want this to be lost in the shuffle of, um, just people landed and they find, no, positions were gone, people landed in positions that they were qualified to teach. Thankfully, we have some really highly qualified folks that work for us that we want in front of kids, no matter what level they're teaching, and we were able to do that. So, we, we remain focused on providing, um, you know, high-quality experiences for our kids. We will continue to do that with the resources we have available to us. There are some things that, uh, we will experience as we move forward and we are going to continue to, to just, to, to show up and, and do the best thing that we can and be transparent about our process and our leadership. I'm confident because we work with professionals. Um, we, we do these, we do this work, it's a, it's a calling and it's to work with kids because we're here, we're here to just work with them and inspire them and, and show up every day and it, it can be really rewarding and I know right now is a really difficult time, but I'm confident that we can move forward together as a community, as a school system and, um, you know, recognizing what we're faced with. I feel as though the recommendations that are put forth in front of you, um, have been done with care and thoughtfulness and in a way to try to land, land a plane and have us be able to really focus on the summer and opening up and making as special as possible and providing the support that we know our staff will need as we move into the next school year. Because with some of these reductions, this is going to be an, an additional need for additional support to just make sure that people have what they need to do these, do this job well. So, um, with that said, I think the last slide is a questions, comments. Thank you. Yes.
Thank you very much. Um, why not, before we kind of get into questions, if you want to, um, open up the floor?
Yes. Yep. I recommend approval of the final FY26 budget in the amount of seventy-eight million, three hundred and nine thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars.
All right. Uh, is there a motion as discussed? Motion to approve the FY26 final budget as discussed. Second?
Second.
All right. Now, we'll open it up to the committee for questions and comments. We'll start online. Simpali?
Um, Lucas, uh, I'm very thankful and because of our work and failure, um, whoever, our teachers, educators, all the staff who are taking their overload on their shoulder, I'm really thankful from the bottom of my heart. And, uh, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? Simpali? Gallagher?
Um, yeah, I mean, I think like, a lot of people in this town, I've been feeling disappointment and worry in the last week, you know, worrying about the continued hits to the school and, and to the town through this budget crisis. Um, you know, I'm concerned about the cuts that are being detailed to, um, staff and further to supplies, you know, preventing already strapped teachers from having even just the physical supplies that they need to, to educate our kids. Um, in the vein of gratitude, I'm thankful for your leadership and that of all the teachers and administrators in the district, um, and to the other departments who stood together last week as well. Um, and I hope that, you know, this town can find a way to support the services that make it a safe and a vibrant community, um, as we move forward. So, I don't have any questions, but, thank you.
So, you know, we've been, uh, going through this journey for quite a while now. I feel like as soon as we finish, we start up yet again. Um, and this past year, uh, there's been a lot of conversations around this entire process, a lot of extra meetings, a lot of communication, a lot of presentations. Um, and I really wanted to applaud, um, all the people involved in that. I know there's a lot of work behind the scenes, um, there's a lot of effort to get out and really let people know what was going on. Um, and, you know, it was disappointing to find sixty percent of the community stay home, um, and not voice their opinions, uh, during this process, um, and more disappointing to hear that greater than half the folks that did come out, um, really didn't find value in what they received from the community, um, or a willingness to continue to support, uh, what is actually required, um, to really make this a community that people moved here for or have enjoyed. Um, that being said, I, I did want to take a moment, uh, to look back, basically a year ago, uh, this was quite a contentious series of conversations and not saying that any of it was a positive experience, uh, with the overall outcome of the vote, uh, but I did want to really commend, um, you know, Police Chief Lynch, Fire Chief McGlaughlin, and then also, um, the, our Head Librarian Felicia Odie, uh, for getting up and, you know, their conversation and the, kind of the important details and really the, the idea that we're all in this together. Um, you know, I really wish that we had the opportunity to all get up there and celebrate, um, the fact that the community was standing behind us. Um, so it is disappointing from that regard, but I did want to really commend them and thank them for their words, um, and their, their dedication to this town as well as their, their respective departments. I also wanted to comment on the fact that, you know, Town Council was very open and transparent during this process. We had a, as I said, we had quite a few meetings at many different locations across, uh, across the entire town, a lot of opportunities to engage and talk. I know that, uh, Jamie Helen had a lot of things to say, was really able to work closely with Lucas, and again, thank you for that, um, in, in presenting exactly what we needed as a town, down each line item, each thing that we really, you know, was going to be important or the pain might be felt, um, and why it was so vital, uh, to really understand how town finances worked, uh, especially in this modern day and age, uh, being hamstrung by, you know, Prop two and a half. But I, I did want to make sure that everyone heard that we did appreciate the way that that meeting went last week, um, from a, a solidarity and kind of a unity perspective. So, thank you to the Town Council, um, and Jamie, obviously, everyone in this room. So thank you to the Town Council and Jamie. Obviously, everyone in this room, we're able to say that often, and we have those conversations, but I know that, I think Town Council probably doesn't hear that from us quite as often, but this is definitely one of those nights. That being said, when it comes to actual questions on what we have in front of us, with the detail that you provided, I appreciate it. I'm very grateful, the fact that we tried to focus as much as possible on minimizing FTE impacts. You know, I know when you're looking to find two million dollars, it's really hard to not do that when you realize just how much of our budget is focused on FTEs. But a couple of things that I wanted to make sure that parents that are paying attention at home, the folks that are watching or are going to watch this over the next few days, I know there was a lot of discussion around fees, a lot of concern around bus fees, around athletic fees, around club fees. And I think that, you know, in looking at what we have here, there's still going to be some questions. And, and I guess really, I, you know, my thought is, we don't have those answers right now, from what I understand, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but we're trying to basically get everything to a balanced point with the money that we have. There are a lot of points here where we are pulling from revolving accounts, as we have heard, as we heard during the entire budget process that I just went on about. Things, we don't see things getting instantly better over the next couple of years. We're not suddenly going to run into a few million extra dollars just lying around. So as, as part of the discussions that are going to be coming forward in school committee, and I think this will likely come from policy, we're going to have to find some of these monies somewhere. Our budget doesn't change, but anytime that we do see revolving accounts, those are things that can be impacted. We are not constrained by Prop two and a half for those. If our costs go up by ten percent, those are things that can be passed along. So for parents who are, who are anxious, who are trying to find out what the bus fees are going to be, what the, what the athletics fees or the club fees are going to be, those are things that we're still working on. It's not a comforting answer right now, but based on the constraints that we have and the timing, that is kind of where things are. But that is definitely something that I think we're going to have to be looking at, and people should stay tuned and continue to voice their opinions on that front to make sure that they know what's coming. We were very clear on this, that we're hoping to reduce the fees. We really wanted to make sure that this was more, you know, everything from athletics to the, the bus and clubs are more accessible to everyone. But we can't spend money that's not there, especially in situations like this. So, that being said, one question that I had for, for Jana. I know that bus fees were a really big question over the past, over the past year. You know, obviously, five hundred dollars a kid with no cap, looks very steep, understandably is so for a lot of families. Is that something that, you know, basically what I'm looking at there is, is that something that's sustainable for us even at that level? Is that covering all of our costs associated with busing that we currently face?
No, it is not covering the contract cost. For FY twenty-five, for example, we have a total of two thousand four hundred and eight riders. Sixteen hundred of those are paying riders. Eight hundred are free and reduced or over two miles, case for sex. When you compare to the contract amount at FY twenty-five, for example, it's one point six million dollars. And we brought in eight hundred and two thousand dollars in revenues.
So in other words, if we wanted to put this into a situation where we're looking at self-funding, much like we do for athletics, like we're talking about with club and things like that, the cost would be upwards of a thousand dollars a student?
One thousand, one thousand and thirty dollars.
Okay.
If you want to self-fund the transportation department.
Got it. And then for athletics, you know, I know that the fees last year were pretty high. Do we anticipate that any of our costs there have gone down since last year?
Can you repeat that? I'm sorry.
So last year, I know there were a lot of concerns around some of the costs with athletics. Have we seen any of our costs come down since last year for athletics?
No.
Okay. So we, we should expect that if we're going to self-fund that, be able to, to sustain that, those costs are going to be in the, a similar ballpark? We're going to be able to continue to support them? We're going to be asking similar things of the parents? Okay. And then another point, kind of in a similar vein, I know no one's excited about more fees, but one thing that has been brought up multiple times is the idea and the desire to be able to do more when it comes to the clubs. Is that something that we could explore, potentially creating a funding system that allowed more clubs to run, depending on, I know we have a lot of things going on in the summer, the idea is to really kind of settle in on this in the fall of next year. But might that be an avenue for the parents that are asking about ways for us to continue to support our clubs or to not reduce, to essentially increase the fees further there so that we can look to support those in one way or another?
I would just say, as part of our strategy, what's recommended tonight is to balance the budget so we can move forward. As we build next year's budget, I envision the policy subcommittee taking up like, what, what is the, what's the business of, what, what's the economy of our, of our clubs activities fees and what we bring in and what they cost? So I, I envision us needing to explore and just look at that as a whole. So I think that's definitely something that the policy subcommittee would look to take up. They have been engaged in a fee discussion ongoing for the past year. We paused because we were waiting to see the outcome of the override. One of the incentives in that override was if we were able to have passed override, it would have helped us with our operating budget, obviously. We could have then looked at some of these fee rates and looked to try to bring them into more of a market value. That was a conversation and a commitment we had as people, that, that was one of the foundational components of the override, was what we would look to do if we had an infused infusion of money. Without that, we, we would maintain our fees, but now what we need to do is to look at next year and look at costs associated. That's going to need to be reexamined as we move forward. So that could, that could change. There could be recommendations that come out. I think we need time to analyze that and see what it costs. And I do know, just in speaking with, particularly at the middle and high school level, just looking at, the reason we wait, we're waiting until the fall is because the priority now is to move our educators, open up the doors to the, the daytime events that are happening in school, and then look at what would it look like to, 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 to bring certain, bring clubs back or in any, any capacity, and what would that cost? What would the math be? So you can expect more information on that. We just need some time. So my comments about pushing to the fall were more about the bandwidth that we need from this decision. As early as we finished that budget, here we are in June again, still trying to finalize it and make our decisions, right? So here we are, but we just need time on that.
Okay. Yeah, and I, I can appreciate those things and understanding that there's going to be this, there's going to be a period of uncertainty for parents kind of going forward there, and I want to just make sure that we are sensitive to that. And then finally, I think this is more of a logistics thing. You brought up the buses there. And if the bus fees are the same, so for all the parents that have already paid, essentially they will be getting an additional bill in order to stay on the bus list? Is that what's to be anticipated this summer if those fees don't change?
If the fees don't change, we put the fee, I think right now it's three eighty-seven is in there when you registered. That's the fee unless it's changed. That's what the fee would be. If it was increased, they would have to be in ancillary. You'd have to send a second notice to collect on the balance. But right now, the fee, as we designed it, was to put it in at three eighty-seven, increase ridership and try to get those seats filled on those buses. So that was the strategy from the policy subcommittee.
Okay.
Yep. We didn't, we didn't anticipate increasing those fees or maintaining those at the, at the five hundred. It was three eighty-seven with a cap, correct?
Yeah.
So just to piggyback and I guess continue on with the fees discussion first, just so that folks that have paid for buses so far, there shouldn't, they would not see an increase for next year?
Unless the school committee took a vote to increase those fees back to five hundred, the, the strategy at the beginning was regardless of a pass or failed override, was to put forth a registration that had three hundred and eighty-seven in an effort to try to make it accessible to families and get as many riders on buses as possible, given the, given the strap, the, given the context.
Okay.
So unless there was a decision to say we're going to do five hundred, I wouldn't recommend that at this moment, but because we're, we've balanced the budget. But what I would say is, this is going to be part of a strategy. I think fees in general, just to talk, a, a summary point, I think as part of our budget development throughout next year, as we look at, I think we have to look at fees in addition to all the operating expenses that we have.
Okay. And I know our, our policy chair is not here, Ruth Ann, but yes, Dave, or either Dave, do we have any plans to bring up bus fee discussion? Because the reason why I ask is, I could see families had been waiting on the override to determine, do I move forward with enrolling? And now that we have 10 days left, I would want there to be some certainty for those families to say, yep, okay, if I know this is what I'm paying for, this is what I should be expecting versus, hey, surprise, you have to pay, you know, the difference. And if you have beyond the cap, it's even larger than, you know, so like, what's, what's the plan?
So what I can say, just from the meetings that we had, not kind of speaking directly, is from Ruth Ann's, you know, kind of purview, but ultimately, when we kind of took up the discussion, and then also we had, there was a discussion of fees, like a draft discussion that was brought to the full school committee back in, I think it was March. On it, it stated kind of for athletics, it had a whole bunch of stuff and a whole bunch of changes, but kind of contingent on a successful override. But then when it came to buses, the, on the, it's posted on the website, it was like that three eighty-seven figure regardless of the outcome of the override. And so that's kind of what was presented to the policy and I believe to the full school committee, is just as a draft, nothing that we kind of officially voted on. The idea being that when we kind of twofold, one, with a lot of the changes going on with the reorganization, I know traffic has been a, a concern for many folks. So we wanted to be able to kind of make bus ridership as accessible as possible. The more kids that we have on the bus, the fewer, substantially fewer cars that we kind of have, dropping everybody off. And kind of bus ridership was one of those mitigating strategies that Director of Operations kind of talked about at last meeting or another meeting ago. Time kind of got really weird in the past week or so. But then on top of that, what we saw last year was with the kind of the ping ponging of the bus fees, and rightfully so. There was a lot in, Miss Maloney, kind of correct me if I'm wrong, there was a, there was a substantial amount of refunds that were issued out last year before, I know we kind of had a little snafu with, with the bus ridership as we got closer with the waitlist, but there was a substantial amount of refunds as we made a bunch of changes to the bus fee itself. And so I think that also kind of helped contribute into that, that draft kind of discussion that was brought up at March, but that really kind of said that here's what the bus fee would be at three eighty-seven regardless of the outcome of the override. As you log on to the link, L I N Q.
Link connect.
I believe there is. I remember seeing like little splash pages. I just kind of enrolled my kids. That does say, here's what the fee is. It guarantees you, you know, a spot if you enroll by Committee Member Gallagher. When's that deadline?
Twentieth.
June twentieth, and pay that, that, or at least make a down payment. But it does kind of list that it could change if the school committee wishes for it to. But ultimately, everything that's kind of come out of policy was in order to kind of maintain as many kids on the bus and decrease traffic. This is probably a, you know, a ideal number of three eighty-seven. And that's kind of what's baked into this budget as well.
Yep, I understand. It's, it's more, once again, more, more of a peace of mind for families that if they go and register now between today and the twentieth, because I know there are many families that have been holding, that they, they're not surprised. And I think that's what, we, we need to make a commitment to them. What is the bus fee for the year?
The three eighty-seven was the recommendation from the, the district, from me, from Colin, and then ultimately the policy subcommittee endorsed that. And then that's what came before your recent meetings, but the three eighty-seven was the fee. I think what we should do is, if, if the decision, I think your point around giving people peace of mind, having that fee be what it is at three eighty-seven, I think we have to look at, once we turn the corner on July one, strategizing and building our budget for next year and having those conversations and bringing that back to full policy. How many riders do we have? We collected three eighty-seven. We had a cap. How did that play out? And I think we have to look at and examine that as we continue to move forward, along with other fee schedules that we have, to Mr. Griffith's point and your point, Mr. Charles.
Gotcha. Okay. And if it does change, I think we just need to consider refunds because if folks are budgeting one amount and it changes, what does that look like? And do we refund fees that we were charged? Like, I think there's
I think, I think that's why, I agree with you, just from a, just organizationally, if we were to change that, say to increase it, we now have to recharge the increased amount. But then you're going to have other people who read, who say, I don't want to do it anymore. So there's just, there's a couple of layers to that. I think the strategy at the time was to put forth a number that if we set it at three eighty-seven, that's what we could roll with either way, if it passed or failed, because we were trying to get out early on it, and we had to pick a number that was within range, that ultimately was able to make it accessible for as many people to purchase the bus if, if they wanted to ride it. So that's, that's why we recommended it, either way.
Okay. So I guess the recommendation for folks that may be waiting.
It's three eighty-seven.
Three eighty-seven, but please register before or by the twentieth.
Yep.
Because if it's after the twentieth, you are not guaranteed a spot. And come the fall, we're going to have to make that hard decision, say, no, we can't find space for you. And Jana's not going to do the heroics that she did last year to ensure that the kids got buses. I mean, we need to hold the line and folks need to trust the process.
We didn't think of it. If you're late, you have to pay the old fee.
You didn't think of that?
Yeah. Yep. So, and just looking at the list, and I appreciate this detailed documentation in terms of where the funds are being moved from to be able to meet that two million dollar shortfall. Like my peers, I, I really wish we weren't in this space. I really wish that the budget that we approved, it was just like, yep, short meeting, let's move, move forward. I do have some questions though, or many questions. The athletic users fees, so the four forty-five thousand, is that, I guess, where, can you explain that a little bit more in detail? Like, where is that coming, like, coming from? Was that based off the assumption?
The user, the amount, the, the decrease of three hundred and eighty thousand?
Uh, well, I had four forty-five, maybe that was the older version. It was on the PDF.
Updated, yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, three eighty, sorry.
Yeah. So we originally budgeted five hundred and eighty thousand dollars out of the operating budget. Now we are shifting three hundred and eighty to the revolving fund and just leaving two hundred thousand in the operating budget.
Okay. So we're, we're taking funds out of the operating, the revolving funds, sorry.
Yes.
So this means that the money that we had kind of saved up is, is less, and we're, we're going to, if we continue at this pace, there will be no revolving funds and the fees will be even higher to really truly be
That account needs to be continually replenished.
Okay, thank you. I mean, at this pace, are we, like, is this like another year of the revolving funds? Like, I guess how, how long until something?
I'd say only this year, FY twenty-six.
Okay. So in theory.
It's about a year in advance?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So in theory, if, if nothing changes, next year's fees for athletics could be higher than what we're seeing now to account for, to make it sustainable. Is that fair?
Yes, we've, we have, still have funds in the revolving account. Usually, my recommendation has always been to try to keep best practice a year in their, in arrears. We're not able to necessarily do that exactly, but that is the goal, to replenish this account. But your, the point you're making is if this continued to deplete because we didn't take in, and maybe, maybe next year, people don't participate to the same level. I'm just making up. And it could be any scenario, then what we would do is that account, that is a count that we have to continually replenish and, and continue to, to adjust. So yeah, you could run into issues. We're, we're basing it off of the best information we have around people who participate in programming, but that's how that would work in concept.
Understood. Okay, the K-12 EL department, and we're familiar with that, but for those that are not close to it, EL is our, which program?
English Language Learners.
English Language Learners, okay. So we've reduced the funds, but we haven't, the, the number of students that we have that are English Language Learners, has that changed at all?
It has. Dr. Rogers, you can speak a little bit to that, but do you want?
It fluctuates, just like student enrollment fluctuates, but we maintain, I'll say, around a hundred students, plus or minus.
Okay. And I guess what would be the impact to those students as a result of this reduction?
So the reduction at the high school will be a change in schedule. So less co-teaching classes, joining English Language Development classes together, where they would have had more of a where they would have had more of a um individualized to their English Language Development need. You're gonna have students with a wider, wider array of um learning in the same classroom and, and less support.
Okay.
Less support for um co-teaching and also supporting teachers, general education teachers who have English Language Learners or multilingual learners in their classroom. They're all S E I, which is Sheltered English Immersion Certified. But if you are not regularly educating students on English Language Development, you might not kind of regularly practice, put those practices into your instructional practice. I think our, our teachers are fabulous and are doing much of that. But some of the support that the English Language Development Department does is to support general education teachers in some of those strategies and um supporting students in the classroom, so that will be reduced.
Okay, yeah, and I, I think we, we need to have a bigger focus on these students, cause I mean, I think of like, as a soccer coach, I have two other coaches that I coach with, and if one of them is missing, we have to pick up the slack. And what you tend to find is we have our fourteen kids and instead of it being, you know, that, that divided ratio, you have a pocket of kids that are just, might be doing some other things that they're not supposed to be doing. So I think, how do we make sure that these students are still getting the learning that they need and it doesn't now affect other stuff that they were doing a lot, so, uh just, just something. Um, supplies was one, and we got an email about that. So we, we, where, the word supplies could be, mean anything. So can you elaborate, what does, what does this impact exactly from a supplies perspective?
It's classroom consumables, uh post-its, markers, pencils, just classroom supplies, main office supplies. The reduction is across all levels, not just schools, but all departments and central office, my department, his department. So it's mainly just general supplies that you use to run your office, run the classroom.
Okay, so, I mean, I'll look at the bright side about this, right? So when I think of supplies, I think of like papers, right? So at least this makes us more digital, so I think the, the reliance on technology computers will be better, right? PDFs that we're sharing with the kids. But this, I know teachers are really great and they're resourceful and um the educators here, you tell me, you use your own personal funds to buy supplies as well. So what is our policy around families contributing to supplies uh for their students and then also for the classroom?
So we, we've done some policy work recently, um in the recent years to try to make this as accessible as possible. So we, our donation policies allow for families, for us to express what supplies we need in the classroom, as long as we're not directly emailing, a teacher's not directly emailing one of their parents individually to say, I need this, so that it creates an imbalance of if I don't give you the supplies, my kid's gonna get an F. You know, that's like the example they give you at the state ethics board. But anyway, um, uh we do have policies in place that allow us to crowdsource um supplies. That can be done in a general sense, and I think that's something that we're gonna have to leverage. We already had some internal conversations with our leadership team around that district policy. The principals at each of the buildings are looking at, how do they organize to determine what supplies can um, what, would, what would be um kind of, how can we kind of crowdsource the need? Like if there's a common need for dry erase uh markers across the board and we know every school needs those, if those are what's part of this reduction and not, but then we put out to the, to the community or to, to folks who are interested in donating, we could work that. I know um Ms. Gallagher had expressed interest in, and kind of, she's been hearing from some folks in town as well, so this is exactly the same conversation around how do we, how do we do that? So we're trying to be as strategic as possible within your policies that you voted on to allow for that to happen. But those are areas we're gonna have to really leverage. And I think those reductions that you see, the percentage wise, we're trying to prioritize what, what is something that could be donateable and then allows us to take that off of the operating expense and get that in a donation, so. We're also consolidating schools, there's a ton of movement. I know from just a few years ago, when we consolidated one school, the amount of materials and supplies and what we had to either move or discard, there was a ton of resources when you start to bring people under one roof that we want to also be thoughtful about as we move into one building, like one middle school. If all three middle schools had supply closets with items and you're bringing those under one roof, you know, we have to be really thoughtful and mindful. So that's why with some time, if the budget's finalized and we can move forward, with some time, we can identify what are the actual needs? Can these be purchased? Should they be, can they be donated? And can we be clear with the community on what the need is? And I think that's the best scenario.
Got it.
Teachers have also submitted at the elementary level, for example, their classroom supplies, so the principals are taking all that and they're trying to look at common themes of what's being asked across the board and what would be more of a general item that everybody, we know everybody's going to use and need that they ask for.
Got it. Um, and I'm assuming this is probably on the list to do, but probably engaging the P C Cs to help out with some of this crowdsourcing as well. Cause I mean, based off of the override, the, the assumption that at least I'm, I'm taking is that while we have the, the broader community is not necessarily supporting the, funding the schools. So I think we all as a community that are invested in the school, that have a direct impact, we should all be trying to do what else we can to help go back directly to the school, so.
Thank you for mentioning the P C Cs. I think they are a, a critical conduit, like in, in the system of how do we get information out and how do we um collect things? So I think there's, and there's been, there's been a, um, a, a pocket of people in, after hearing the results of the override have reached out or personally um reached out, or Porch Fest's coming up to me at Porch Fest to say, what can I do to give some supplies back or, or anything like that? So I think if we coordinate our efforts and get all those people who've expressed interest to have a way to do it, I think that's gonna be the best case scenario. So I appreciate your comments and questions. I think that makes sense.
Thank you. Um, as far as the next thing is the instructional interventionist, so we removed a hundred thousand off of that. What was the initial amount that we had allocated for them?
It was three hundred and twenty.
Okay, so, so it's now two twenty that we're going down to. So what does that, how does that impact, like what does that look like for our students in terms of the change?
It's a great question. Unfortunately, it's a reduction of tier-two services that we're able to provide our K-five elementary students. So we use multiple data points, we've talked about this, you've seen the math presentation before you. Interventionists work closely with our math and literacy specialists, um who, and classroom teachers and special educators and E L teachers, everyone that's works within the school to identify students that may need additional supports. So there's gonna be a reduction of hours available to do that, which will result in reduction of amount of student groups we're able to support.
And this is a general ed initiative, so this is any student who's identified. For example, if they're in a class and the lesson, the teacher is teaching fractions and she's identified or he's identified through some of the formative, some of their, just quick assessments or on their quizzes and whatnot, they're identifying kids who are struggling with specific skills. The interventionists are usually, there's coordination that happens within the building to say, these four kids, these five kids, whatever, however many, they've been identified of all having a lagging skill in some concept in the lesson that was taught. So uh they're able to get that intervention so they can return back to the full class and get, and stay uh current with their students. It's important when you think about that, because if you think about it from a perspective of our earliest learners to our high school graduates, the sooner you intervene in those ways and those moments, you, you help with the gap widening if you don't get a concept and it grows. So um we didn't decimate the entire uh pool of funding, but we're gonna have to now prioritize the tier-two and try to look at this from a level and it's gonna limit the, a number of students who we can, because we won't have as many people doing that intervention.
Yep, got it. Um, and I know, does this also impact like the students that are higher performing versus the ones that are lagging at all? Like, so we'll say somebody that's excelling in math and they're now in the classroom board.
So our elementary tiered support's focused on remediation.
Okay.
More than, our, our math and literacy specialists can support teachers and have supported teachers in accelerating, but that's not part really of the tier-two.
Okay, perfect. Um, and then I guess my last area. So I applaud you all for focusing on trying not to remove F T Es and trying to adjust based off of attrition, not backfilling. I think what would help really paint the picture to the community, the, the true impact of this is like what is our, what was our anticipated staffing versus what we're at now? Because, yep, we've saved these three people, right? But on top of that, we say we've lost ten positions. And we didn't lose anybody, but at the end of the day, people are only focusing on the people impact versus, oh, well, we didn't hire all these empty spots that we, we couldn't. So I think that would really be a powerful picture to show, yeah, we have, you know, five, five thousand kids and we wanted to have, we'll say, five hundred staff, but we only have four hundred. And yeah, we didn't fire anybody, but we didn't hire anybody to backfill and now we're doing, we're doing, we're asking the teachers to do more with less. And a teacher that was focused on one area now has to, you know, divvy themselves up three different ways and, you know, it's not fair for them, they're gonna burn out and the quality of education, while the teacher's gonna do the best that they can, I, I wouldn't expect somebody to be juggling three different things and expecting to do a hundred percent at all three.
And I think I would, I would say twelve F T E are what's reduced for positions in the budget. And I try, I said that upfront, but I agree with you. It happened the other night. It's, it's like you have to reiterate and correct and kind of stay on this. Twelve positions are, are gone from what we had proposed. I, I'm al- I was almost hesitant to say, I'm also, I have this kind of line where I want to make sure I think about our teachers and I think about not just folks watching now, but watch later. As a superintendent, trying to balance a line of, we had to reduce, I need the community to understand the impact of a failed override was the reductions. I also have educators that I was trying to also layer in a message around, we put a lot of care into thinking about, we've made cuts in this district and we've let people go. And there's not many um opportunities where we've put the work in to really try to have us keep some really excellent educators that we want in our system to stay with us, cause recruitment and retention are real, shifts are real, final placements based on the reorg, but ultimately trying to find that line. I think I'm in a unique position as a superintendent in general, even for my colleagues, given the number of reductions we've had to make in just this calendar year. And land at this one with two million and, and be able to not redo a whole high school schedule over the summer like we did last year to redo a middle school schedule, that they just put a ton of work in and worked to bring the staff along with their understanding, answer their questions, make modifications. I feel like we've, we've, uh where, the landing the plane is the only analogy, I know it's kind of a dull one, but the idea of, if we were in this plane, we took, uh, we took, like a engine, engine went out, but we have, we have a mechanism and a way to land it, cause we know how. But ultimately, I'm trying to balance um the, the morale of our, of our team to say, we can get through this and we will. And the same people that are with you today will with, will be with you tomorrow, they're just gonna be in a different space. But the reductions, to your point, Mr. Charles, are real, they were needed, we put them in because we needed these and we saw the benefit to having these, and we're not giving up on these. We just know in order to balance it, this is what we had to do. And we'll continue to look next year at our enrollment across all grade levels, all sections. We'll look at all of our um caseloads, all of our needs, our leadership structure. We'll look across the board, our fee structure, and, and build another budget that we'll present to you that we feel as though provides our, our community with the, our community of teachers and, and students and families with what they need for us to be, to be high performing. We have a very, we have a great district and I just would say, it's the people. And I'll tell you, I was in the Marine Corps and we used to joke about, we did a lot with very little. And I don't think that's a great mantra anymore, because it's like, that's not the way to do things. But when you hear Marines, you don't think about their equipment, you think about Marine, I don't know, that, I don't anyway. I think about the Marines, they're not known for their, for their, known for their uniforms, I guess, but at any rate, uh I would just say, it's the, the equivalent of the Franklin leaders and educators we have are what make the reputation of Franklin, what it is. And I think we have some great people, and I think that's what we have to build off of. These are setbacks. This is not good. I'm not sitting here with rose colored glasses pretending like everything's fine. I'm just trying to thread a, a very delicate needle of being responsive to kind of the cuts and, and the reductions, but also looking at, we have the right people that we can land this plane and we can move forward in a way that's productive and restrategize and go back to the drawing board and see how we continue to respond to where we're at. But I'm confident in the people we have working for us.
Yeah, and I, I am as well. I think, I think we have the right folks to do the right job. And I don't envy any of you. I mean, I, people don't envy my role here, but it's easier than what you all have to do to go through it every night. I mean, all, all that we do here is review it, question it. But you, you are all in the trenches and I commend you all for this. And I have the full faith in all of you that we will get through this. And um, we just need to make sure the community understands what you all are doing as well, so they can come out and support you the next time we ask for help.
Can I make one more? I know this isn't like a one-on-one, I feel like we're having a coffee. But I think the best thing, just to, I'll end on this note. For the community out there, I think giving our educators grace and our leaders grace as we not just navigate right now through the end of the year, just next year, having a sense of, you know, we've had a lot of change, you know, we're focused next year on establishing new school communities, but just having the grace that, um, the folks that we have working with your children are here because they want to be here. They love your children, they want to work with them. We want to, we want to make every grade that they experience special and memorable. But we're, we're asking for patience, grace, as we navigate a whole new system for all of us next year in addition to some of the fiscal setbacks we've had. I just think like, that's my biggest message is patience, grace and um support. And as many people who've reached out that want us, want to offer that support, so I think that's a positive that I'm grateful for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Firstly, yeah, thank you, Lucas, uh, Jana, just the entire team, thank you all for the hard work you put into this. It's been months and months of um planning and of course hoping for the best last Tuesday and it didn't turn out the way we all wanted, but you also had, you planned for the other, for this scenario as well. And thank you for um all, all of that work and now we're, we're implementing it. A couple of questions, then I'll, I'll save my comments for, for the end. So I guess first off, of all the reductions that you listed out here, whether they be non-salaried or salaried, like what proportion of these would you say are just one-time, one-time reductions, one-time cuts?
They're all, they're all one, I mean, I'd like them all to be one-time cuts.
And like in the future, like, like, what's the grade these can be, like truly not go back to the well to in the future?
Without replenishing anything connected to a revolving account, you really can't go back to the well. Uh, I think Mr. Griffith mentioned just future, like our future austerity, I think, you know, federal austerity, state austerity, I think we, we, we run the risk in those areas. As far as position goes, we are, we have really created a system based on the number, there's no, there's no real wiggle room to make, you know, additional cuts to our budget that are going to be, um, you know, we, we don't have, no, so they're all, they're all, we need them all. That's why we ask for them.
Yeah, so, and there's no, after this year, no, not, this isn't coming back. Like it's not moving things around, like we're, can't, can't go back to this again, it's just, it's gone. And also to that point, what were we looking to restore from last year's cuts that we are no longer going to be restoring?
Uh, some of the, some of the grade level sections were restorations. STEM had been taken off the books, but had been put out in, in previous budgets. We had a K-five at Student Services Admin that we had reduced in previous budgets at, at one of our elementary schools, the largest one. So that came off as one of our reductions in, in previous years and we tried to bring that back, so that's, that's off. And then.
Clubs too, right?
And clubs, thank you. Clubs and, and, and the user fees. We, we were trying to bring those athletic fees and user fees back into more of a um market value. That would have been a restoration too, in essence, but those didn't happen.
Yeah, so again, we're not, we're not bringing ourselves back up to even where we were, much less where we, where we want to be going and, you know, these are things that you can only cut once. Can't go back to the well and cut again, just, they don't exist to cut again. And then I guess my, my last question, I'm seeing uh one. one, one point zero eight percent increase over the FY twenty five appropriation. Of all my time on the school committee, I can't remember an increase that low. And I can't remember an increase that low from all our time in the, in the years looking at the budget data before our time on the school committee. Do you, do you guys even know when we had an, an increase in our budget that was that low? The last time was? If not, it's fine.
No, I, I don't. I'll have to look that up.
Yeah, that is far below the level of inflation, just to, again, to keep up where, where we are, much less where we want to be going. Yeah, thank you. And I'd like to, you know, reiterate the point that Superintendent Giugirri made earlier about just how really important that it was that, you know, this committee supported the redistricting process. Now, we're, we're already seeing, we are seeing classroom size increases because of these, because of these reductions. And now had we not created a system through redistricting to be able to absorb those as best as possible, this, you know, the, the reductions and the cuts to services would have been much worse. So yeah, again, thank you to our committee members for, who supported that, creating this system. It's really, wasn't just the fiscally responsible who did with the three million that we saved, but that savings, we were able to mitigate even worse outcomes right here. Create a, a system as robust as it, as it can be. And also to your point again, Lucas, so, now, we, you know, we still do have a great school system. Now, we have great teachers, we have great building leaders, we have great administrators. And we'll always do the best we can with what we have. But that's the optimal thing to remember here with what we have. And what we have is getting less and less and less. You know, the really, last year, we kind of started, it's going a downward spiral with, with all the cuts. And that's, again, part of why we're not cutting as much this year is because we cut so much last year. And this trajectory is gonna continue unless something changes. The cost of health insurance is not gonna go down, it's only gonna go up. Cost of transportation is only gonna go up. Cost of materials, it's only gonna go up. Cost of salary, it's only gonna go up. And, you know, the more things that go up, the more and more we get squeezed and the less that we're gonna have in the long term to do, to do with. And again, you know, we as a community really need to understand that, that this is the tra- trajectory that we're going in. And if we want to aspire to be better, we have to, we have to make that choice. So again, thank you all for the hard work. Sad that we're here, but we are and we're doing the best with what we have, like I said, and we'll continue to. And hopefully we see changes in the future to, to what we have. So thank you again.
And just to answer your question, I had been compiling data from, going back to FY thirteen. And this is the lowest percent increase that, that I at least can have. You have?
Yeah, it is the lowest since FY sixteen. That's what I have the data back to.
So you've been kind of going back a few other years, so well over a decade. And it's right, it's, it's, this whole thing is disappointing. You know, the last school committee meeting before the end of the school year. And honestly, a lot of great stuff to be excited about and proud of, too. You know, we, we talk about like the, the reorganization that we've done that made us so much more agile and provided a better educational experience for our kids. And also, by the way, saves over three million dollars for the taxpayers of Franklin every single year moving forward. That's awesome. That should be something that, that's, that's just kind of applauded all over the place. And then, you know, to, to the FEA and, and the members of the negotiation team, the school committee that voted on the, the teacher contract as well. Again, that's just yet another victory lap. That's a terrific win for the entire district, not just kind of for the bottom line financial, you know, taxpayers, for, for our kiddos, for the financial stability, for all of our teachers and staff. There have been some incredible achievements being made over the past two years. And also in the past two years, every time we kind of try to give that, that, you know, we, I know, I think, Al, you kind of mentioned it, that as soon as we voted on the budget and, you know, way back when, we said, now it's, it's out of our hands and the budget's into the, the community's hands. And, you know, and here's these great achievements that we've been able to do. And here's this great budget that we have. And now we, we need your help to be able to support it. It's disappointing when this is, is the outcome. You know, especially when we talk about like the, the twelve reductions that we're having to make for, for this, because of this override. Where, and that's on top of the twenty-four reductions that we had last year because of the failed override. And it's not due to efficiencies or because it provides a better educational experience for our kids. It's, it's just because we're broke that we're having to kind of make a lot of these hard choices. And that sucks. But, you know, I, I do wanna, Lucas, you know, thank you, you know, for you and your entire team for all the work that you do day in and day out. And as you mentioned, if not for the incredible hard work that you all had to do with this reorganization, it, it would have been, it would have been a nightmare if all of a sudden, you know, we're coming up and trying to say that we gotta find cuts for so many more millions. So thank you so much for everything that you're doing. You know, keep talking about landing the plane, you know, you, you're doing that. You got that, that engine blown and we just kind of turned off the runway lights. But you're doing the best you can. And I really appreciate that for everybody on the team. I'm gonna also just thank all my, my colleagues on the school committee. Again, what we've done these two years is something I hope that, that you all and I hope everybody in the community is, is proud of, the accomplishments. These are great things that we've been doing. And it's just unfortunate that these consistently have been the outcome. But then I think my, my colleagues on the town council. Shout out to just Councilor Cormia Ledger. Really appreciate what, what you did and what you, what you said. Respect the hell out of you. And also too, just for Councilor Hamblin, I don't know if you watch her on, she was my ride or die the past couple of weeks with this override. Every single time that we had an event, whether it was something kind of going on, she was always there with me. I appreciate that so much. I think I, I spoke with her and texted her more than my own wife weeks. And, and to my wife, thank you very much for, for stepping up. We kind of pull in double duty as, as I was out almost every other night for some events. But, but so many events and, that were run by the great organization of the volunteers from One Franklin. And I also wanna thank you all so much, just from the bottom of my heart. I know this is not the outcome that any of us had hoped for, but I, I applaud you tremendously for the hours that were spent organizing and, and knocking on doors. I met so many great folks, just kind of going from one neighborhood to the next, holding signs. You know, it's been, you know, almost twenty years, you know, since Franklin's passed an override. And Counselor Jones had kind of pulled up an email from fifteen years ago and it's a carbon copy that could have been read today. But the, this outcome, this failed override, it has nothing to do with a lack of effort. And so really, I thank you all so much for, for that One Franklin initiative. And I'm excited to kind of see where we're gonna go from there and however I can help. I'm there as well. And so I'm sorry that we're still in this position. I really hoped that this was not gonna be how we kind of end the school year. But thank you for continuing to kind of turn out and do the work, because also, you know, as, as your vice chair, I think you mentioned, talking about like that, that turnaround, having this, this other plan. Because also for folks at home who kind of may not know, you know, obviously it was, you know, Tuesday night, we got, you know, disappointing news. Less than twenty-four hours later, the town council followed through with, the entire process had been transparent and open and upfront. They followed through with exactly what they said they were going to do. And then less than twelve hours later, we were up in your office, Dave and I and Lucas, kind of putting together this agenda where you already had the framework built out for, for this. Next day was high school graduation and by like nine o'clock at night, I think the school committee had gotten this full kind of email, breaking everything down. I'm sorry that we have to kind of go through this process again. You know, in a silver light, you know, last year we had four budgets, now we have two.
Next year there's one.
There we go. FY twenty eight would just be half a budget. Thank you very much and I really appreciate everything you're doing here.
Thank you. So just before you take action too, I just would, just wanted to just say, next year with the reorganization, it's like, it's, it's a whole new world for us a bit. So we're going to have to really look at our plan and how we've allocated our funding and our expenses and our salaried positions and all those things. And really take a keen look at that as we build our budget forward. So just wanted to say, like, as we go through this, we're also entering, we're converting from apples to oranges. And we're about to, July one, we're in the new, we're in, everything we've been planning while working, we're kind of turning over into that, the consolidation, I, the middle school event. I was with one of Luke's teammates, was, was on the steering committee. There was many colleagues. I will say, you know, as hard as this is, the consolidation of the middle school and to see, I've had the advantage of going to all three middle schools throughout the years and seeing all the educators and leaders and all the different folks. To see them under one roof in one night, to engage with families from different, I, I think that's going to be a really, and I, and I, this applies to elementary too. I just, I happened to be at middle school last night. I think that's gonna be a really special school. That's gonna be really, really interesting to see how that plays out because of just the teams and, and the makeup and a lot of people have worked together for years. And there's some folks that worked kind of aside, same content area, different schools, but know each other. So I'm excited to see how that evolves and continues. And I think, you know, people leaving, a couple of parents made comments to me about, I came in apprehensive. I've been apprehensive all year, but after tonight and having gone and circulated through, I'm excited to see. So the, I had said to the teacher all year, it's been a focus on our budget, on the reorg. And part of me has been, you know, drawn to what are the bright spots of all this change? But I've been curbing my enthusiasm out of respect for, some people are like all in, some people are, I could be all in if I had all the detail. And then some people like, I just do not want change and I don't wanna hear about it. So it's like, I think we've stifled a little bit of that excitement out of respect for those who aren't ready. I think as we hit July, we owe it to everyone to show, if you feel good about certain parts of what we're about to deliver on, I feel like we need to start saying it and be confident in that. I think we've given the respect to folks and brought people along. But I think you're gonna start to see me be less stifled in some of that. If we can just get through this and enter July one and turn the corner, I think if we're not excited about what we're gonna be doing next year, then no one's going to be. And I don't mean that in a fake way or a fake way, but I think at the end of the day, I'm, I'm excited to see what the future holds. Despite the challenges we're talking about tonight, we wanna land the plane and I think we wanna be able to move forward in a productive way and thoughtful and real way, not in a fake way. Yep.
Unless there's any other discussion? Vote will come on a motion. Roll call, Gallagher?
Yes.
Griffith?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
McNeil?
Yes.
Sam Polly?
Yes.
Callahan, yes. Thank you. Go on to superintendent evaluation. The chair recommends your approval of the superintendent's composite evaluation for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year as discussed. Is there a motion?
Can I see this up first?
Yep, well, we have.
Thank you. So as we discussed last time with the, the evidence at our meeting, we had all the school committee members submitted the, their input and feedback for the superintendent evaluation by the beginning of the month. And then last Tuesday, the members of the superintendent evaluation subcommittee met and went over all the feedback and kind of came up with a composite, both the ratings, but also composite recommendations and recom, and, and commendations. And got all put together into this final report that we're presenting tonight. And that's, that's in your packet for review. And just a brief, we can just go, just a, you know, brief overview of it, 'cause I'm sure everyone will read it. It makes for great beach reading over the summer. Keep that in mind. So overall, the committee gave Superintendent Giugirri in regards to his performance goals, a rating of exceeded on the focus indicators, overall grade of exemplary, and a final composite rating also of exemplary. And I'd like to thank Superintendent Giugirri for his hard work and dedication to the district, particularly in the extraordinary circumstances that he and the entire admin team and this district were going through this, this year. And specifics of the recommendations and commendations can be seen in the report. But, you know, thank, you know, please continue to keep up the good work and be, be open to learning and growing and applying all that you've learned in this upcoming year, which is also gonna be a transition as we enter the first year of the redistricted school system. So that's the, yeah, that is kind of an overview of the report. And, yeah, Mark? And with that, I'll move to approve the superintendent's composite evaluation for the twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-five school year as discussed.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Fantastic. And thank you all so much for the work that went into this, for all the committee members that submitted the, their data and their evaluations, and then for the subcommittee as well then, for putting this together. Appreciate it.
Absolutely. Sorry, I was remiss. Thank you, Paul, thank you, KP, for the work that you did on the, this subcommittee meeting. Really appreciate it.
All right. And we'll have, open up for questions, comments?
My comment's actually surrounding just, I think, the, the uniformity of the responses from folks, you know, was anonymous. So we don't know, you know, kind of who in particular, but there were a couple of categories. I think it didn't matter who answered, they, they all answered the same. So really wanted to commend you on the, the transparent and efficient budget process that was uniformly outstanding, or ratings. And then also your communication. You know, I think there's really been a, a very dedicated focus to that, you know? Communication's not always the fun part, especially, you know, nights like tonight. But it is something that is important. And I think it's really been a big part of your success. So I would ask that you make sure that you continue to, to build on that, continuing to communicate effectively and, and being as open and transparent as we have seen in the past year, both in the budget process and elsewhere. So thank you.
Glad this year's done for you. And hopefully next year we have a less, not chaotic, but you know, less busy year and we can kind of get to the business, which is the students, so.
Once again, thank you for all members of the committee for your submissions. Thank you to the members of the subcommittee for helping out, synthesized it all. And thank you again, Lucas, for all your hard work and the entire team behind you. Really appreciate it.
And all on?
Yeah. Thanks, everyone. And Lucas, extraordinary work and thanks for the upbringing. That's all. Thank you.
Just, but I would just say thank you very much. I, I didn't expect this rating. I think, I don't think I've ever received exceeded ratings. And I just really feel proud of our team. I think, I, I mentioned this when I presented my evidence, but it's a reflection of the work of the entire district that allows me to be successful. And I'm just, I'm really, really fortunate to work with some really, really stellar people, many of which are in this room right now. And, you know, working here, raising children here, there's, there's always pluses and minuses to all that, but I would not trade that for the world. I'm really invested in our town. And despite the, the challenges, I feel as though, you know, working with the people that we have in this district, I meant what I said earlier in context of budget, but just working. The work that I have specifically had to lead more recently has definitely pulled me into the stratosphere of listening sessions and outs, you know, night meetings and reorganizing, a lot of which happens. And I'm, I'm most happy when I'm engaging with people and learning and talking to folks in, in buildings. And I think that's an area I wanna really try to recommit and focus to next year. So bandwidth wise, I think that's an area, I think Mr. Charles kind of alluded to that. I appreciate this. I thank you for your confidence in me and, and the ability to lead. And I'm gonna continue to try to earn that confidence from our stakeholders, the folks that, that I work for, which I consider servant leadership. from our stakeholders, the folks that, that I work for, which I consider servant leadership and just working for the folks that we directly impact, for a teacher's ability to teach in a room, for a leader's ability to lead a school, and our district and, uh, leadership for their ability to lead their department. So thank you, and, um, I'm committed to doing this work and doing it to the best of my ability moving forward. So I really appreciate the feedback. I will read this on the beach in more detail, but, um, just wanted to say thank you out loud and publicly, and thank you for your support.
Um, yeah, we'll say, you know, the, the, the ratings, obviously very well deserved, uh, but it, it, you know, the, um, high marks kind of go well past the seven of us here. Uh, just speaking to so many folks in the community, uh, we're constantly kind of hearing about, just had the, talk about gratitude, it's been a theme of, of tonight amongst others, but just, um, how, how thankful they are that you are here, uh, that, that you both, that, that you live here, that you're part of Franklin, Franklin's culture. Uh, one of the, the, the most frequently asked questions I've gotten since Tuesday, uh, is, oh my God, is Lucas going to go? And it was fantastic to be able to kind of confidently say no, you know, uh, not just because we locked you in for, for that six-year contract legally, you know, but just who you are, uh, as a person. I know that you are, are here for the betterment of our kids. And, uh, and everybody was, was incredibly relieved that I spoke to because, um, you know, they, they know how much you bring to the table, day in and day out. And, uh, everyone was, that I had spoken with was, was very relieved to know that despite the situation that we're in today, uh, that you're going to continue to, to lead us and lead the district and, and especially our kids as we continue to kind of move forward. So very well, well deserved. Um, and it was also because you only had one comment about Emmett Smith. Otherwise I was going to dock you. All right. Um, any other questions, comments? None? Roll call Gallagher?
Yes.
Griffith?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
McNeil?
Yes.
Son Polly? Steve is hanging.
Sorry, it freezes. Yeah, I guess.
That was a close one there. All right. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, discussion only items, none? So information matters. Uh, the first one I have written down is superintendent evaluation.
As mentioned, superintendent evaluation subcommittee met last Tuesday, went over the feedback from, um, everyone's submissions and created the report that we just voted on.
All right. And, uh, you got the hot button issues tonight, budget?
Yes. Budget met right before this at six PM, where we, again, previewed what we discussed this evening with the FY26 updates and, uh, approved what we voted on this evening to move forward to the entire committee.
Thank you. I know, um, policy has not met yet, uh, but we will have polished out, uh, the dates of the next meeting. Uh, community relations.
Um, so we were supposed to have the newsletter out last week. Given the override situation in tonight's meeting, I felt like that we should hold it. So that will be going out on the thirteenth, and that will cover the recap of this meeting. Um, I didn't think it made sense to leave it as like a cliffhanger, um, because since it'd be the last newsletter of the, the school year. Uh, but we will be coming back in August sometime with the newsletter prior to the next school year starting.
Strawberry stroll?
Oh, yes. Thank you. I forgot about that. Um, yeah, that's, it's something that's happened this weekend, right? Um, and per the forecast, it's not going to be a rainy day. So, um, yeah, it was not a Saturday or Sunday. Yeah, I'll, I'll be out in the fields on Saturday raining in the, in the rain with, in soccer. Um, but yeah, so we do have strawberry stroll. Um, we have, uh, we have a booth. Um, thank you all for signing up, uh, for the strawberry stroll, uh, coverage. Uh, we'll have some handouts. Uh, as I mentioned before, we do have that magnetic calendar with the school, um, dates and, uh, for holidays and days off and whatnot. Um, so we'll pass that out. Um, Aaron has created some great documentation around, um, like the, the, for the PCCs.
The bus.
The bus, exactly. Cause that will, there'll be seven days after, as of, of the, as of the thirteenth. Um, we'll have some stuff around budget and, um, have some lollipops for the kids as well. So, you know, yeah, exactly. Yeah. Okay. We'll, we'll, I'll bring some, I'll bring leftovers here for the next week. How about that? You're welcome. Um, but yeah, it'll be a great time. I think last, last year we had beautiful weather, great turnout. Um, from what I've heard, uh, the downtown partnership has changed the layout, so I think it'll be a better experience. Um, it's just a really great time. And the strawberry shortcuts are really great. So, um, come on up.
Fantastic. And joint PCC?
Uh, joint PCC, I have to double check if we're going to have one more meeting before the year ends. But if not, we'll be done. We'll reconvene in the fall.
Uh, mental health and will be?
We will be at the strawberry stroll right next to you all. So we will be handing out, um, resources and different other. We have a new cornhole game that we'll be playing, the feelings cornhole. So that'll be fun, and we look forward to being with you all.
Fantastic. And, uh, reorganization liaisons?
Uh, we have not met since before the last update.
Not for lack of trying. Sorry, Colin.
Things have been a little busy.
Colin has tried very, very hard to find time to have one schedule, and each week has come and gone. So need to shout that out. He's tried.
All right. Uh, consent agenda.
I recommend approval of minutes from your May twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-five school committee meeting as detailed. I recommend the acceptance of $2,500 from the Parmenter PCC for field trips as detailed. I recommend acceptance of the, of $1,800 from the Franklin Music Boosters for field trips as detailed. I recommend acceptance of $1,350 from the Horace Mann PCC for field trips as detailed. And I recommend declaring the attached list of curriculum and library resources as surplus.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as detailed?
Move to approve the consent agenda as detailed.
Second?
Second.
All right. Uh, questions, discussions? All right. Then vote will come on a roll call. Gallagher?
Yes.
Griffith?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
McNeil?
Yes.
Son Polly?
Yes.
Callahan, yes? All right. Motion passes. Uh, good to the order. It should be said.
Not really for us, but just I guess general. Um, given the light of the failed override, I think really comes down to the community just to come together and see how do we support each other? How do we, um, you know, share ideas that we can, to increase the revenue, however it may be? Because at the end of the day, that's really what we need as a community. We need more revenue in this town, uh, to be able to support the services that we've enjoyed, we've loved, we've lost. And, um, without that revenue, that won't come back, they won't come back. So, um, definitely love to hear ideas. Um, please share it with us, share it at the town council. Um, and if you are involved, continue to stay involved and see how else you can help. Thanks.
And, uh, yeah, cause and on that point, uh, just to the community, um, you know, uh, through, uh, the, uh, working with One Franklin, I had, you know, was, uh, with a bunch of other folks, uh, kind of texting out, you know, like a hundred different people, uh, in, uh, all across, uh, uh, all across this great community. So for those folks, it wasn't actually a robot. It was me. Uh, usually at a ball field, uh, sending that out. So you got my phone number. Uh, if you have anything that, any ways in which we could, we could approve upon, I know the good of the order right now is for the school committee to say, uh, we can kind of approve, but the, for the rest of the community, if there are ways that we can improve, uh, and make this district better or try to push the needle a little bit further, uh, in the right direction as we kind of move forward, because these past two failed overrides didn't solve the financial issues facing this community. Um, you got my number? Give me a call, uh, anytime. So, um, I'm sure I'll come to regret that. But citizens' comments. Any citizens in the audience, in person or online who would like to make a comment on an item not on tonight's agenda and falls within the committee's purview? Please.
Steve Sherlock, thirteen Magnolia, community information director, Franklin Mattis, Franklin Public Radio. Uh, just a thanks to the committee and to the superintendent and entire district, uh, for getting us to this point and setting us up for the future. Obviously, the foundation has a few cracks in it, but I think it's, the foundation is still there. So, um, on a happier note, uh, I did have a conversation that's recorded. It's going to be on the radio on Thursday, if I remember. But it's, you can check Franklin dot news for the schedule. But Aaron O'Leary, who is leading the Meet Me in the Middle Reading Program for the middle schools, six books are selected, of which they can choose one of the six. They're supposed to read two, so one's on their own. Um, so we had that audio discussion with Aaron and, uh, Callie Keating. Great conversation. Encourage you to listen to it. If you don't miss, catch it on the radio, the podcast is available. You can get it there. Um, the other piece was interesting too. Had a conversation with Chris Russell at the Drummers Studio. Did you know we had a drummer's studio and they were celebrating their fifteenth anniversary here? Um, there's a celebration event in June twenty-first at Bellingham High School. It's supposed to be an amazing event. Um, he gave me a private drum solo that you'll be able to listen to in the last about two minutes of the audio. It's amazing. So just a little on the positive side. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Does it look like anybody online? Okay, new business.
I want to comment one thing.
Yes, please.
Uh, yeah. We have a, you know, uh, have a school committee and, uh, we'll continue to advocate for the student needs. And during the holidays, don't hesitate to shoot us an email for our entire school committee. We're always here for any kind of problems. So, uh, really thankful for the rest of the committee for thriving for the students. Thank you.
All right. Uh, Gretchen, go ahead.
Right. Uh, Gretchen McCauley, twenty-two Hunters Run. Um, I first of all just want to say thank you to the school committee, uh, Superintendent Jager and the admin team and all the Franklin educators for all your hard work, um, during this budget season and beyond. Um, my question is specifically about the school resource officers. I know they don't come specifically from the school budget, but my understanding is the police officers that were cut from the police budget are the school resource officers. Um, can you confirm that now we're left with basically one and a half school resource officers for the entire district?
Yes. Yes, the reductions did come from the, um, from that, it's the community resource division, as is where those two cuts came. And so that they could move their, um, police force, I think those were transfers into patrol for, um, the, the general, uh, town. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Welcome.
New business.
So new business, uh, just follow-ups. Colin did text during the meeting. The plan is to move forward with that project, uh, this summer. Uh, that's the goal. That's his understanding and belief on the vendors. Obviously, um, he's working out the final details now that we have approval. So, but the goal was, is a sense of urgency, try to get that done if we can for the start of school. So that was that. Um, app, calendar, confusion will be clarified. Uh, we'll work on that tomorrow. And then, um, to your point, Mr. Charles, at this point, the bus fee is three eighty-seven with a cap. That's what we're moving with at this point, moving forward. Um, and we don't anticipate any change, um, in that for this season. That said, the caveat, Mr. Griffith, I think illustrated was, we have to take a hard look at all of our budgeting for next year, which includes everything's on the table for review. It's probably the easiest way I can say it. Um, your next meeting, we do have a meeting on the books on, and it's up to the chair and, uh, to, to decide. But there is one on June twenty-fourth, if we feel the need to continue to have that meeting. We can have internal discussions to decide based on the business at hand and the timing of decisions. But we have front-loaded, uh, a lot of decisions and votes for you to take action on. And I know my team is eager to get to work on finalizing this year so that we're prepared before teachers leave for the school year, so they have the support that they need to pack up and, and do what they need to do, but then transition into the summer to start to build, um, for the following school year. So we can talk more and decide. That'll be your, your, your call.
Um, all right. Uh, then, go ahead.
Sorry, one last thing, because I just looked at the newsletter and I almost forgot. Um, the fishing derby is on the fourteenth. So it's in the newsletter, but wanted to just put a plug for the students in their civic program because they were super excited and passionate about that work. So, um, if you can go, you like fishing, join, have fun. Hopefully it doesn't rain as much, but we'll see.
Thank you very much for, uh, for that plug. Yeah. All right. Then, um, all right. Otherwise, uh, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Roll call Gallagher?
Yes.
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
McNeil?
Yes.
Son Polly?
Yes.
Callahan, yes. Thank you all so much. Nobody was going to say that.
I was waiting to get beat.